We are back in open session and Chancellor Burke will provide a welcome greeting.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our remote board meeting of the South Orange County Community College District. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome trustees Marcia Milchaker, Tim Jamal, Terry Witt-Rydell, Barbara J., Carolyn Inman, TJ Prendergast, James Wright, and Student Trustee Sotira Mateen. We welcome members of our district community who are participating virtually and members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Following the meeting, the district will make the recording available on the SOCCCD website. The audio of this meeting is being closed captioned in real time. The board is open to receiving public comments pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-15-21. And in compliance with AB 361, the published agenda stated that members of the public requesting to provide comments will be given the opportunity to make public comments directly via remote access and in real time during the meeting. Members of the public wishing to make a comment will be instructed to use the raised hand feature, unmute their audio, and must comply with the two-minute time limit. I would now like to turn the meeting over to trustee Milchaker, who will call the meeting to order.
Thank you, President Burke. The January 24, 2022, meeting of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, Assembly Bill 361, and Governor Newsom's most recent executive order N 122. Our January board meeting is being held remotely this month due to the COVID-19 upsurge. We welcome students, faculty, districts, staff, and members of the public who are attending the meeting virtually via Zoom webinar. Are there any actions taken in closed sessions by Chancellor Burke?
Yes, there is one reportable action. On a seven-to-zero vote, the board took action in closed session to deny an associate faculty member's appeal of an administrative determination of unlawful discrimination.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor Burke. Right now, we will have an invocation led by trustee Terry Witt-Rydell, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Wright. Following that will be will be public comments. Thank you. So an invocation led by trustee Terry Witt-Rydell.
We are headed for a new year. Last year was an academic year unlike any other. We overcame unfamiliar changes and found even better ways to learn, study, and create. Faculty, staff, and students, you have affirmed the mission of Saddleback College, IBC, and ATEP, showing us with optimism and urgency that we can fulfill our responsibilities to each other and the community. I thank my higher power for your resilience, creativity, leadership, and selflessness. Now, in 2022, let the colleges, district, and the board measure our progress by the success of our students and the feedback from our community.
Okay, is Jim on or else?
Okay, so I think you'll have to have someone else do the pledge, trustee Milchaker.
Yeah, trustee Sotira, would you like to leave the pledge of allegiance? You're muted?
Um, if someone else can go, that would be great.
Okay, okay. Would trustee Jamal, would you like to leave the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you for the flag.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, all of you. And um, so right now, we have public comments. So members of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item or on any other matters of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board will be given an opportunity to make public comments directly via remote access and in real time during the meeting. Members of the public wishing to make a comment will be required to use the raised hand feature will be unmuted and asked to speak. A two-minute time limit for each speaker will be observed. Be advised that the maximum allotment for public speakers on any one topic, regardless of the number of speakers, shall be 20 minutes, but the board members can make a motion to extend that if they wish. So are there any public comments at this time?
Yes, there is one. Right now, Amina Yassin is being allowed to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, dear board members. My name is Amina Yassin. I am full-time faculty in the International Language Department. I'm here tonight along with my colleagues representing our IL Associate Faculty to relate to you their fears and their concerns regarding their course offerings. Those fears and concerns are not only about their safety on campus during the pandemic, but also about the cancellation of low-enrolled courses long before the semester begins. We diligently hand out APC codes in our department, and our course enrollment significantly improves between Day One and Census Day. As a matter of fact, in the first week of spring 2022, I have personally sent out over 15 APC codes, and more than 10 have already been used. My classes are not the exception. I have spoken with several of my colleagues who, between December and now, saw their enrollment numbers improve by more than 100% and therefore be deemed safe from cancellations. Had we canceled those courses in early December for not meeting minimum enrollment numbers, it would have been unfair and unjust to our Associate Faculty and our students also, who need those courses to complete their degree and transfer requirements efficiently and successfully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll take them under advisement. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from the public?
I do not see any other public comments. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. I do. Professor Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo.
Okay, thank you. Professor Hernandez Bravo.
Okay. Dear Chancellor, Board members, and student body president, we would like your support in allocated funds to have a mandatory implicit bias and microaggression training at the districts and the college. We believe that the decision-maker should demonstrate the importance of an unbiased workplace to the institution cultures and allocate funds for this mandatory training. We can all benefit from these trainings. Bias and prejudice take many forms. Sometimes they appear obulous calculators to oppress members of marginalized groups and remind them of their lesser status, but they can also make more undefined form. People can discriminate without harmful intention or for whatever matters anywhere of this. We do have implicit bias training at Sarban with a program in a computer without interaction with the group of people. We have written resolution, have got word group about this matter, brought speakers, talked about the various meetings, and we haven't been able to take action in this extremely important issue. The same audience attend the presentation, and we must reach the college at large to stop bias and microaggression at several communities at Sarban. Let me give you some kind of example. For first-generation Latinx students are being encouraged to attend Cal State Fullerton being tall. Quote, "You don't need that. That is too difficult. You don't need that extra math class." Quote, "You will feel more comfortable with other students from your same community." Quote, "It is easier. You shouldn't go to a UC system. It's not for you." Even though we have a nonprofit organization to partner in the achievement to help first-generation college students.
Okay, is that all? Okay, thank you for those very important comments. I appreciate them. And we'll take that under advisement. Thank you again. We're moving on to-
Sorry, there's one more public comment.
Okay.
Milchaker, Bushra Nadal.
Good evening all, and happy International Day of Education. My name is Bushra Nadal, and I'm a full-time faculty in the International Language Department. Tonight, I would be speaking on behalf of our Associate Faculty. Years before the pandemic, at the administration's urging, most of our international language courses were converted to be taught entirely online. However, in the fall 2021, when the decision was made to have 50% of classes be converted to hybrid and go back to campus, several of our Associate Faculty accepted that assignment, even though vaccination was not mandatory to students nor faculty. This semester, they felt vulnerable when they were informed that low-enrolled classes would start being canceled a month and a half before the beginning of the spring semester. They understand that some classes must be canceled or combined if the enrollment is not there, but they felt that the college was not giving students enough time to enroll before the cancellations. Allow me to share some of the invaluable contributions of our Associate Professors to our Saddleback home. Many of them are regular participants in the Equity and Diversity Committee, an active committee that put forth four resolutions just in the past year alone. Our Associate Faculty were part of the retired Gaucho from its inception over 10 years ago. They also were constant advocates for the college to convert some restroom to gender-neutral ones. However, their most significant contribution outside the classroom is their constant involvement in the many events their department organizes. The full-time faculty would not be able to organize so many events that are open to the community at large without the help of our Associates. I thank you, dear members and attendees, for allowing me to speak on behalf of our Associates.
Okay, thank you so much. We value our Associate Faculty greatly. Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. Are there any other comments?
That is all.
Okay, thank you again.
I'm sorry, somebody else raised their hand. I'm so sorry. Connie Kuyt.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, and students, I am Connie Kuyt, a full-time faculty in Spanish in the International Language Department. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the IL Department, our faculty, and beloved students. I have three points I'd like to ask for, please. The collective group would like to speak about registration challenges that we experienced last semester. Students who told us that they were caught in limbo when classes were listed as hybrid with live streaming and then a physical return to campus. If we could ask, please, to keep the enrollment period open until the first or second week for classes, especially for low-under-enrolled courses, to allow students in the pathways to success to complete the courses that are often offered only once per semester. Like all of our colleagues in international languages, I've sent out numerous APCs and held Zoom sessions with students during my office hours to encourage them to take the class, even though it says return to campus. Many of them have complied and used the APC. The issue is, as another colleague has previously stated, they're concerned about the enforcement of the vaccine on campus, who enforces it, and how. They're concerned about the exorbitant price of gasoline and how they will return to campus if they can park with construction, and most of all, if it's safe in the parking lot at night. As a colleague who has returned after a class was found totally alone, she was the only car in the parking lot at 9:00 PM. I'd like to also ask for, please, for equity and diversity training in microaggressions and implicit bias on campus every semester is an ongoing initiative to ensure that students and faculty and staff feel empowered and truly inclusive and appreciated. Thank you so much for listening to our comments. We appreciate you.
Thank you. We'll take all these comments under advisement, for sure. Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I believe that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. We'll take them under advisement, for sure. Right now, we're moving towards Board of Trustees reports, and I think today we'll start, we're going in alphabetical order, and we'll start with trustee Carolyn Inman, if that's okay with you. You're the next one alphabetically.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and a start to a new year and a new semester, and compliment all of us and all of you on the flexibility that we're showing during these difficult times. I want to combine two events that I attended since we were together before. The December groundbreaking for the Gateway Building and the tour with Congressman Levin, both at Saddleback College. I am combining them because I have a new feeling about certain things due to these visits. We all say and are supportive of students, but I have never felt as strongly that buildings can support students. In one building, flexible furniture will be used to encourage innovative teaching. In another one, I love this one, Wi-Fi is in the ceiling. It made me think of going through airports and seeing people gathered around the electrical socket trying to use their laptop between flights. So this is obviously a great improvement. But the star of these examples really is the Gateway Building. The thought and care that has gone into the planning of this building are incredible. When I was at Cerritos College, one of the members of my department kept talking about if the student walks onto campus and doesn't feel welcome, and it's too far to go take the test, it's at another place, he may just decide not to go to college at all at that time. I wondered why he was so interested in student services. And then I went to Mount San Antonio College as a full-time person, teacher, and saw the new student services building, which his wife had been instrumental in designing. So I got the connection. That was a while ago, and it was state-of-the-art at that time, but our Gateway Building is many steps beyond that. So I welcome you to the new semester, and I'm proud to be part of a district that truly puts students into the center of every decision.
Nice. Okay, thank you. And next is trustee Barbara J.
The IVC Foundation recently announced that they were postponing their gala event celebrating excellence, originally scheduled to be in March, to Thursday, May 5. Alyssa and her team are busy planning an event that is sure to be fun, engaging, and most importantly, will raise greatly needed funds for the students and programs of IVC. I encourage you all to join me as a sponsor of the event and keep your eyes on your mail and email for more information about this event. On December 14, I attended the IVC Board of Governors' virtual meeting. Chris McDonald, Vice President of Instruction, gave a report on career education and the IVC economic impact on the area that the college serves. The impact was huge and very impressive. On Tuesday, January 11, started Professional Development Week. I listened to the CCLC Government Relations Update on Governor Newsom's budget for the state. There is a $45.7 billion projected surplus, which should allow considerable assistance to our community college. The update stated there is money for pension obligation buydowns, that's the state part only, health insurance for part-time faculty teaching over 40%, deferred maintenance, and housing. We should follow the process carefully as these items can change in the final budget. On January 11, I also listened to Dr. Stern's welcoming address, opening session. Dr. Stern addressed COVID and what the colleges should be doing to protect students and staff. And he said, "We are all under stress," and he's a part to us is be kind, slow, show gratitude, be your best self, be good to one another. After his talk, Margot Levitt, President of the Academic College Senate, gave an excellent presentation on diversity and equity. On Thursday, January 13, I reviewed a presentation by Catherine Hader, Ray Zimmerman, Bridget Hoida, and Renee Garcia on building trauma-sensitive, high engagement, and liquid syllabuses. I was highly impressed by the care of these and the love these professors had for their students. Thank you for that excellent presentation, and Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. And next, trustee Prendergast.
Yes, don't have a lot to report. I wasn't able to make it to the Professional Development Week because I was teaching myself, but I do hear they were, there was good presentations from both presidents and from faculty. So if you were able to make it, I hope you enjoyed it. I, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Wright, are you here? You're here. Great. Trustee Wright, would you have a board report, or he had difficulty getting in, he might not have gotten in. So I guess we'll move on. Trustee Wright, we'll move on to the next trustee, which would be trustee Jamal. Do you have a board report?
I'll keep it short. Welcome back, everyone. Some of what I was going to say was already covered. The Gateway groundbreaking, as trustee Inman so eloquently said, was wonderful. I think that building holds incredible promise for Saddleback College. For those of us who are with Congressman Levin, I think it was really illuminating, his tour of the campus. To say that he was impressed, I think, would be an understatement. I think that tour and the lunch and the, the, the complete, you know, he saw a complete nature of the campus, not only the buildings, but I think just the enthusiasm for those of us who are on the tour. And I think it opened up a lot of opportunities for funding and policy improvements and through Congress. So well done. And I know there's lots of follow-up that will come out of that. I was sorry to miss the IVC opening session. I was working. I tried to make it. I could not make it. I'm sure it was done well by Dr. Hernandez and his team. I did attend the Saddleback opening session. Some of it I was on the move, but huge turnout. So it was really great to see 300, 400 people during the opening session. And, and so that was great. And look forward to, although we're in, you know, Omnicron, you know, problem situation right now, we will, we will bounce out of this, and I know we're ready to move ahead successfully. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Witt-Rydell.
Yes, I started out with early, and well, first of all, I wanted to say I hope all of you had a joyous holiday, and I wish all of you a Happy New Year. I started out early. The California Community College Chancellor's Office offers these webinars every Wednesday, actually, the first Wednesday of every month, from 9:00 to 10:00. And I attended this one because it was a summary of all that they had done, the highlights of how the community colleges have contributed to California. I unfortunately could not attend the first Professional Development Meeting with Dr. Hernandez, and I was able to just get the end of President Stern's address, and I found it very stimulating. And I heard more and more about it, especially from our President of Academic Senate, from others who really could understand the biases that she was bringing forward. I did attend the December, the groundbreaking for the Gateway Building, and I have to say that Congressman Levin was more than impressed. It was incredible experience to see his face and his enthusiasm. And I think we all should take a bow for all that we've done to contribute in some way, shape, or form to all of the contributions that are bringing Saddleback College IVC forward. I think it's wonderful. I did want to say quickly, since I represent the foundation, Saddleback Foundation, I wanted to let you know that they received several generous year-end gifts, including $100,000, $65,000, and $25,000. ASG has provided them with scholarship matching gifts of $86,000. How wonderful. And that matched donor gifts of $350,000 to $5,000 will match at 50%. So gifts will have a large impact, and thanks to these amazing students. So that's it for me.
Okay, absolutely. Now I'll give my report. I'll try not to repeat if I can.
Can I use mine?
Trustee Wright, great, wonderful. I'm glad you're here. Yes, I'd like you to give your report.
Yeah, I attended the Wednesday, December 15, 2021. I attended the Saddleback College and District Celebration of the New Gateway Building, groundbreaking ceremony. The new three-story building is set to op, open in the fall of 2023. Then I went to two ballgames. On Friday, December 17, of 2021, I attended the Saddleback College Men's Basketball Team against Golden West. Saddleback College won 84 to 75. Then finally, on Wednesday, January 19, 2022, I attended the Saddleback College Basketball Team against Irvine Valley College. Irvine Valley College won 74 to 70. Thank you.
Great. We love to win. Okay, thank you. As many of our trustees said, the trustees did attend the groundbreaking for the Gateway Building, as many so eloquently said, was going to be opening in, in fall '23, and the building will be innovative in design and function, is designed inside out to help our students succeed. I just wanted to say, I started attending Professional Development Week presentations many years ago, and I learned that there I could learn firsthand all of the incredible work that our staff was doing to promote our students' success. And the other board members started coming also, and I was delighted, and I'm delighted to see them with me at so many of these events. The IVC President's opening session, President John Hernandez announced winners of the college's inaugural Karen Campus Awards. And this is a national movement of classified employees to support students, and IVC is, is doing a fabulous job with this. They actually awarded the two top awards to Writing Center Lab Technician Beth Sanchez and the Facilities Department, and both of these choices received a thunderous applause at this meeting. So everybody was happy about that. And also, the Classified Senate President Desiree Ortiz helped, made a video about her helping IVC students, highlighting the work that the IVC's Karen Campus does. At the Saddleback College President's opening session, President Stern emphasized how important it is to support each other during these very turbulent times. Margot Levitt, the Academic Senate President, gave a fabulous presentation. Another professor, Alana Rosenberg, was named to a three-year term to the National Honors Board of Directors. And these are other meetings I attended. I don't have time to talk about them much, but the Geek Report with Jeff Doris, Gurley, Gillettman, and Sandy Pope, and many other geeks, and I loved it, of course. The Quad redesign fieldwork presentation by anthropology professor Erica Vogel, where her anthropology students helped design the Saddleback Quad. It was a win-win for these students and our quad. There was a teaching race controversies in education that Professor Dan Walsh invited other board members to attend, and by Dr. Edward Kermit, and the last presentation in jobs and internships presented by Rita Sulanian about their new app called the Handshake to Help Saddleback Students and Employers Get Jobs Together. The employers get workers and the Saddleback students to get jobs. So that was great. It was wonderful. So thank you so much, all of you. Right now, we're going to have our student trustees, Sotira Mateen. Do you have a report?
Um, not really, other than just to reiterate what trustee Jay said about looking out for the IVC Foundation Gala, because it's a great way to support students.
Absolutely. It's going to be the 5th of May now, right? Thank you. Right now, the Associate Student Government reports, and I think Sam Lockhart, the Saddleback Student Body President, couldn't be here. So I believe President Kathleen Burke will be reading his report. Is that correct, President? Sorry, Chancellor Burke, sorry.
Thank you. I have Sam's report. Good evening and a belated Happy New Year to our trustees. I hope all is well, and I regret that I will be unable to represent ASG from- I hope all is well and I regret that I will be unable to represent ASG from here on out due to a class conflict. I have bulleted a few items of note to present to you in no particular order. As you may have seen, we alongside ASI VC have voted to allocate funding to travel to the ASACC conference in Washington DC. We believe that this conference provides opportunities for leadership growth, communication between community colleges within the United States and make a difference in our evolving society. We support the current measures that aim to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. We are disheartened that the situation does not allow for us to return to campus, but understand and align ourselves with the temporary restrictions that allow for selected personnel only to return to campus, athletes, students in lab classes. I emphasize that I use we to signify not just ASG, but Saddleback students as a whole. We have several events planned in the case of a return to campus, specifically a winter semester club rush. We remain optimistic that the situation will improve and intend to support the board and the presidents of the college in whichever course of action they deem appropriate. We thank President Stern, Chancellor Burke and the Board of Trustees for keeping us appraised during this evolving situation. Again, I regret that I can no longer join these meetings as a representative of ASG, but I am in the process of searching for a replacement. Thank you for your patience and I hope to relay more good news.
Thank you. I, I saw in our board agenda, some of these wonderful trips our students are going to be taking. I was thinking it's great for our students. So thank you. Next is the Irvine Valley College Student Government President, D'Angelo Hunter. Is he here?
Yes, I'm here. Hey, hey, everyone. D'Angelo here. Happy New Year, everyone to the board. Also, you know, everyone at IVC and Saddleback, me and Sam and our executive vice president actually got to meet up over this last weekend. So we were discussing kind of some of the things we could team up on. So it's been really awesome. I think the first part, I call it the first term, we got to really warm up and then also work with our, I almost say our counterparts, but our allies over at the other college. And so as we move forward, we're looking forward to like bringing forth multiple resolutions to kind of support from the student body. One being student housing as that starts to go up through the board and, you know, as we discuss things, feasibility and whatnot. Another thing we'll be supporting is we'll be seeking support from the student body for sixteen week versus the eighteen week, I believe, calendar, which I think is really cool. I think there's a lot of benefits to that. But as we come to support a resolution or if not bring in more information about that. Other than that, we've had tons and tons of events that we've been planning with the Omicron. Yes, we took a damper on a few things, but we had a really fun time doing a scavenger hunt where I was kind of like the last, the last person, the last thing of the scavenger hunt. Now they kind of find me as I lurked around our Student Activity Center, which was kind of fun. It was really awesome. And then our judicial court has been making awareness of like student rights that include great grievances. But also the nine plus one rights will be enforcing that here soon. Other than that, we have started up our Sustainability Committee. Super motivated individuals are in it. It's going to be really cool to see what they kind of bring forth on the table. So I'm excited. There's a lot of energy in ASI VC. There's a lot of wanting to work with faculty and other ASGs as well. So I'm excited for the new term or the new spring semester here. And yes, we'll be looking forward to these board meetings to get out all this information for you all as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we love hearing about all the information. Thank you. Next, the Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, Daniel DiRae.
Good evening, trustees and good evening, Chancellor Burke. I'd like to talk to you tonight as the hard work to reopen our campuses during COVID continues about an ongoing project of Irvine Valley College faculty and staff to ensure the academic enrichment and success of our students. IVC is in the process of instituting academic school completion teams, each coached by Dr. Al Solano, who is founder of the Continuous Learning Institute and by IVC's English professor and guided pathways coordinator Rebecca Kaminsky. Dr. Solano describes the efforts that we have undertaken as part of the quote relentless pursuit of continuous improvement to ensure student success and equity. All completion teams are made up of disciplined faculty in our schools, both full-time and part-time faculty, counselors and institutional researchers who collaborate to plan and implement data-informed, equity-infused practices and projects that will work to increase success rates and decrease barriers for our students. For example, we currently have teams representing the following academic schools at IVC. Business Sciences led by Professor Dan Scott, Math and Computer Sciences, Josh Danofsky and Gwendolyn Chen, Languages and Learning Resources and Library, Amanda Jerome, Physical Sciences, Michael Dowd and Thomas Cullen, Humanities, myself and Professor Kaminsky. The School of Social and Behavioral Sciences, by the way, is launching their program on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of this month. We look forward to starting the remaining schools this semester. And I also want to mention that IVC is fortunate to have an extremely talented and dedicated classified staff completion team. Currently the only one like it in the state community college system as far as we know. And Desiree Ortiz, Amy Hunter and Jeanette Murillo lead that team. I look forward to reporting on the progress, on the progress of these teams and the projects that they create to you later this spring in my final Senate President's Report for the semester. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It sounds like wonderful things are going on at IVC. That's, I think the this particular day, professional development, all had to do with student success. And that's what I was trying to convey when I was talking about some of the things. So it's wonderful. Now the Saddleback College Academic Senate, Margot Lovett, who gave a wonderful presentation at the Professional Development Week about equity and, and really empathy.
Thanks for that, President Milchiker. I appreciate that very much. Good evening, everyone. I want to start by saying that given the explosion of COVID cases due to the Omicron variant, the board's decision to institute a vaccine requirement clearly was the right thing to do to give us our best chance at keeping students, faculty, staff and administrators safe, safe and healthy. So I'd like to thank you for that. And I also want to thank the classified staff and administrators at Saddleback who have worked unbelievably hard to implement the protocols for confirming vaccination status and who continue to work with students granted exemptions. The challenges we have faced in doing so really are the result of forces beyond our control, particularly the difficulty in getting tested, which is not something we could have foreseen. Next, I'd like to follow up on some of the comments I made at the last board meeting regarding the chancellor recruitment process. Two changes to the process are concerning, as they may produce unanticipated consequences, I'd like you to be aware of. The first change adds a community member to the search committee. Now, on the face of it, this sounds like a really good idea. However, unlike district employees who face disciplinary actions for violating confidentiality, community members are not subject to such repercussions. We are concerned that even an unintentional breach of confidentiality on the part of that community member might result in legal action against the district brought by an unsuccessful candidate for the job. The second change is the board being provided with all applications that meet minimum qualifications. My concern about this is the same, namely that an unsuccessful candidate for the job might allege that the board influenced the work of the search committee and as such unlawfully interfered in the process. The Academic Senate values the work that the board does for our district and as such does not want it to be placed in financial jeopardy through others' actions over which it has no control. As such, we would ask you to consider rescinding these two changes. Thank you.
Thank you for that input. We'll talk about it for sure. Thank you. And then the next is Faculty Association with Professor Louis Long.
Thank you, President Milchiker. As the spring semester gets underway and as our faculty head back to their mostly virtual classrooms, on behalf of the Faculty Association and the faculty we represent, I'd like to thank the board and the district administration for their delay in returning back to face-to-face instruction in light of the growing infection rate because of the Omicron variant. We hope that that infection rate will soon begin to plateau and fall off and that we will be able to get back to face-to-face instruction as soon as possible. But in the meantime, we are grateful for the efforts to keep students, faculty and staff as safe as possible. At the same time, it occurred to me the other day that since we are about to head into our, about to complete our second year under on primarily online instruction, there are many students who are going to pass through our colleges and graduate and transition on to four-year institutions or on to professional programs without ever having set foot on campus. And it's sort of sad to think that they missed that part of the the pleasures of an academic life that take place in between the classes on the campuses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. So many young people have missed so much, but thank you. And then the next is Irvine Valley College, no, Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Desiree Ortiz. And I, I'd like your videos. It was great. Of you, you helping a student with your, with your caring campus initiative.
Thank you so much. Yes, those are videos that we, the caring campus committee that we have at IVC really just, well, the whole campus as a whole, we have really embodied the culture of what it means to be a caring campus. And we're very, very proud of that. We were proud of honoring our recipients of our caring campus award and just the support. President Hernandez has really given us that space and we really appreciate it. I really want to thank our caring campus committee. Our inaugural awards, our videos, those videos are something that we will be launching throughout the semester. We got our students involved. We hope to get them involved more. Our caring campus committee is Marcel Reyes, Amy Hunter, Angela Mahaney, Theresa Slaughter Chauvier, Zoraida Quiros and Juma Chakaporti and myself. Extremely talented group of individuals. And they really just have gone above and beyond to make sure that we keep creating this culture of caring campus, especially now. I want to thank all those who have been on campus. Not only our facilities and maintenance, our IT department, our PD department, who have been there since day one to support us all. Our student services, wonderful staff who is now back on campus hybrid. We are there to support our students one hundred percent. So I just really want to thank everybody, our faculty members, everyone who has supported us. And IVC truly is a caring campus. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And then Saddleback College Classified Senate, I, I think that's bacon. So I think we could move on to California School Employees Association, Scott Ferguson-Green. Is, is he here?
Yes, he is.
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Burke. Good, good evening. With this Omicron variant that so much has just swept across our country, we are living in the most difficult and challenging times, whether we know it or not. We know what the the Omicron variant has done physically to a lot of folks, but it's had some indirect effects too. And through all of these challenges, I do want to recognize and thank Dr. Cindy Biscachill, Executive Director Kim Wittis and the entire human resources team for being able to do the overwhelming work that they are doing in keeping the operations of the district going in that regard, as well as trying to keep everyone safe. There's not been universal agreement on how that's done. But Dr. Biscachill has listened to the concerns of CFCA and the classified staff. And we really appreciate that. We, we just had a meeting on Friday where we addressed our concerns to Dr. Biscachill and Executive Director Wittis. And they did listen to us. They are overwhelmed with so much work just trying to get things done. And yet they were willing to listen to our concerns. And that's a reflection of the cooperation and from the Board of Trustees to try and make sure to keep everyone safe. And I want to thank them for being able to listen to the classified staff and hopefully that will very much continue. Throughout all of this, there has been a lot of amazing work that has been done remotely by the classified staff. And I am really proud of what they've been able to do. And we look forward to when classes return so that the classified staff can really shine in supporting, again, our students, our faculty, our managers, our administrators and everyone in the district. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we're, we've got wonderful people at our district. Absolutely. Thank you. And then the last would be Police Office Association. Is Bo Arbuthnot here?
He is not.
He's not. Okay. So next, we're moving into item five point O, which is a public hearing in our district is we are now at board agenda item five point one, which is conduct a fifth public hearing to solicit input regarding the composition of trustee areas. I would like to officially open the public hearing for board item five point one. The public hearing on the matter is at hand is now open. Before we have the public hearing, Chancellor Burke will provide an introduction.
I believe we're moving on to the redistricting presentation.
Yeah, yes. So this, the agenda item pertains to a public hearing and presentation for the redistricting update as it relates to voting areas and trustee elections in the South Orange County Community College District. This is the fifth required meeting for the redistricting process. We will now move to item five point two, the redistricting presentation. For the, for the presentation, we will hear from Chris Chafee of Redistricting Partners. Mr. Chafee, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you can go to the next slide. So thank you for having me here tonight. Again, my name is Chris Chafee. And I'm here to present a presentation that's very similar to ones you've seen before. So we always start these presentations on just giving it the public a background in redistricting. It's something that we have to do every ten years after the census. A lot of people think about it from the congressional and legislative standpoint. But redistricting has to occur in all districted systems in California, including, of course, the Community College District. Go to the next slide. The principles that we use to draw the district lines come from a traditional list of criteria, including that we want to have relatively equal sized districts based on people, not citizens. And the courts have given us a tool to allow for a ten percent total deviation between the smallest to largest district to allow us to incorporate the criteria, the following criteria. The next one is contiguous, that all areas should touch each other from a geographic standpoint, that they shouldn't have islands of one district and another. The third criteria is that we want to keep districts compact. So we're looking for straighter lines, more circles and squares, or more circles and squares rather than serpentine hands and strange shapes. That we want to maintain communities of interest. And the final one that will really be focused on in a lot of these district lines is following city, county and other governmental lines. A lot of community colleges look to the underlying unified school district lines or the secondary school district lines. Those are the five criteria that we've really used to try to bring forward these draft maps. So you can go to the next, the next slide. So these are your current lines. And actually, keep going, two more, I think. Yeah, one more. And the reason we're here and the reason we really have to rebalance your, your district lines is that under the current twenty twenty census, your district lines have a total is that under the current 2020 census, your district lines have a total deviation of 71.6%. And this is really due to unequal growth patterns within the district. Where you can see that District 6 currently is almost 50% overpopulated and District 5 is over 25% underpopulated. So because of the unequal growth within the district, we really need to, to balance the, the district lines and create new ones. Go to the next slide. So before you tonight are three draft plans. The first one seeks to unify cities. Plan two, seeks to unify school districts. And Plan Three seeks to, to make the most minimal changes from your current lines. Next slide. This is a Plan One. This, this, this plan seeks to unify cities. You can go to the next slide. So this, this map shows the draft lines in black and then the cities shaded, shaded behind. So district and the, the major change in district in this Plan, Plan One revised is that now in District E, Laguna Woods is, is whole. And I know that was something that was requested at the last board meeting. But let me just go through a, a little bit of an overview of each district. District A includes all of North Tustin, Tustin and Santa Ana and a portion of Irvine. District B includes only the areas within Irvine. District C includes all of Laguna Beach and a portion of, oh, sorry, Madam Chair.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Which are the lines? Are the lines the old district or the lines the new district?
Sorry, the, sorry, this is actually, this is the existing lines overlay. So the current, your current lines are shaded and the draft district lines are in black. Actually, can you go to the next slide? So I was talking about the city, the city splits. I'm sorry about that. So this slide shows the city overlay with the draft boundaries in black, the black lines. So you can see here now where the district, where the cities, how the cities overlap with the, with the draft lines. So you can see A includes Tustin, North Tustin and Santa Ana with a portion of Irvine. B is all within the city of Irvine. C includes Laguna Beach and a portion of Irvine and Newport. District D includes most of Lake Forest and Tribuco Canyon and a portion of Mission Viejo and Rancho Santa, Santa Margarita. E includes a portion of Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills and Eliso Viejo and a portion of Laguna Niguel. F includes all of San Clemente, most of San Juan Capistrano, sounding the point and a portion of Laguna Niguel. And District G includes all of Rancho Mission Viejo, La Rara Ranch, Las Flores, Coto de Casa and a portion of Mission Viejo and Rancho Santa, Santa Margarita. If you go to the next slide, this, this plan has a total deviation of 7.4%. So you're well with, well below the 10% threshold. That's, that's legally allowed. I don't know, is it if this is a good place to stop and I have questions from the board on Plan One, or I can just go through each of the plans and then give it back to the board?
Well, I think the, I think you should keep my views to keep going, but because I think we can see all three and then discuss. But to Trustee Millschur's point, the overlays weren't, I don't think they were consistent throughout the, the draft maps, but.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I, I'd like you to explain that if possible. That would be wonderful. And so, so I think you're right. I think we could ask questions at the end. The, I, I think the question of what the overlays were to explain that, that, that was important to ask now.
Yeah.
I, I thought it was the opposite, that when, when you answered it, I thought it was that the areas that were bordered by the black lines were the new.
Yes, they are. The black lines are always when, within all these overlay, sorry, if I explain that backwards. So the draft lines are always the black lines and the colors are the overlay map. So if it says overlay of the USDs, it's the, the USD lines are shaded. If it's overlay of the cities, the cities are shaded. And if it's an overlay of the current lines, the current lines are shaded.
So the black lines are always, when you say draft, that's, that's the new map that you drew, right?
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So I think we can go forward to draft. Yeah. So to draft two. So draft two, and actually, why don't we go to the, the USD overlays? Because that's what this, this plan seeks to, one more. There you go. This plan seeks to reduce the number of splits of the unified school districts. So District A includes most of Tustin USD and a portion of Irvine USD. District B again includes all of Irvine USD. District C includes, and again, a portion of Irvine USD and all of Newport Mesa USD and Laguna Beach USD that's within the CCD lines. District D includes a portion of Capistrano USD and Irvine USD.
No, it couldn't be Irvine.
No, it doesn't. I'm sorry. That's wrong.
Probably Saddleback.
It's Saddleback. You're right. I'm sorry. Then my notes are wrong on that one.
Yeah.
District E includes Saddleback USD. And District G includes Saddleback and a portion of Capistrano USD. And District F includes all of. Sorry.
What is that area under District F?
Under District, that's the water. It just shaded into the water.
So it's shaded green, but it's, it's really water.
Yeah, it's, it just, they go to, it goes to the water line. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So that's, so these are the, that's Plan Two. It really tries to unify USD lines. We go to the next slide. And then one more.
What was the school district for F?
F is.
Capistrano?
Yeah.
All of Capistrano? No.
Let me see. Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm pulling up my, my notes are off, so I wanted to pull up the map real quick. Yeah, it's, it's, it's all of Capistrano USD.
You're talking about, you're talking about F, right?
F, yes. Um, and then the, the third, if we, if we go, okay, so this plan, sorry, is total deviation is 7.7%. So again, there is wiggle rooms well below the 10% deviation that is legally allowed. So you can make changes if you'd like. The next plan really is what we call a minimal change plan.
I don't agree with that.
I mean, it, it seeks to minimize changes as much as possible, but when you have two districts that are 75% different, right, then you have to have quite a few changes. If you go to the next slide, yeah, with current lines, you can see here that District A has shrunk. And it only includes portions of Irvine in it. District B actually has expanded to include, to include more of Irvine into it due to a popular reduction or lack of growth in that area. District C, you can see expanded both into Irvine and also south into Laguna Niguel. District D has shrunk because of population growth and lost La Rara Ranch. District F has expanded and now includes portions of Mission Viejo and Laguna Hills.
District F, you mean?
Sorry, sorry, District E, District E, I'm sorry.
He said District F, he said that.
Yeah, I know. I, I misspoke. It's District E. I'm sorry.
What's, what's district are you talking about? Is it District E or F?
District E expanded to include Mission Viejo and Laguna Hills. The portions of each.
Well, I don't think Viejo, I see, I see Lake Forest.
I think you got it the other way around. I think G, G is, I guess E has some portion of Mission.
It just has a tiny portion for the important part of this, of this, the city.
Mostly like forest in there, it looks like.
Yeah, it's mostly like forest, but it's expanded a little bit. You, you can see into like the, the, I guess, the orange district. District F expanded into portions of Laguna Woods and Eliso Viejo. And then District G in the middle expanded to include La Rara Ranch and Las Flores.
Why did you put Laguna Woods in District F?
For population equality.
Where are the, sorry, my, my shit, what, where, where are the current lines overlay? I see that obviously we all see the boundaries, the black.
So they're shaded.
Yeah. So where, where, where do we, where is the district? Because you said these are the most like the district we have now, but I don't see it.
If you go to.
We don't have that. Now, I don't have it.
I think it's mischaracterized this slide. I don't, I don't, I don't think this has the current line overlay.
So it, it does. You can see that, see, see how there's a green, green district and B and a purple district?
Yeah.
That, those are the current lines, your current lines. The orange, the orange, like, see that how you have a green district?
Yeah.
The top of, that's, that's currently, currently your district two.
Okay, but the others are kind of have, have mixed colors throughout.
Yeah, they are.
Well, I think it's because you have like street, you have highways behind them and you also have some shading of like, of some topography, like forests and.
Okay. Okay, but like District E, for example, it's got some like violet or purple and some.
Yeah.
District E, District E is nothing like the way the district was before. It's just nothing.
Well, basically, the only thing that's left of District Six is Lake Forest.
What, what do you mean District Six?
So District Six, well, District Six is actually F, but I'm sorry. District E is, no, A, B, C, D, E. District E is, well, is portion of, of five, which is this orange district in the middle. That's kind of a a seven.
But if you look at that salmon color that you see in F, in E, in G and in C.
Yeah, that's all.
Color is Area Five right now.
Correct.
That's nothing like any district that you drew.
You're right, but because C is so underpopulated. District Three. It had to expand some in one direction, so it had to expand into District Five. It had to expand into the salmon color.
But my, my current page looks, it's, okay. You call it salmon now. See, that's so tough to try to compare from last time to this time. And then you have letters and then you have numbers. And now you've added color because I have the old page 19 of the current map. And what we are talking about right now is purple.
Yeah, they kept, they kept changing colors.
And this is, it, it's very difficult and I'm not sure why you did that.
Why they took the letters in instead of the numbers?
Well, one of the things, one of the reasons we use letters is because we, we like the agency to find numbers. Because the numbers are assigned to an election order. So we, we kind of mirror your numbers, but if you want to switch anything down the road when you do sequencing, we like the agency to make the call on what districts number, how districts are numbered. So like this is our, our, us trying to equate District A to District One, your current District One, B to two, C to three, D to four, E to five, F to six and G to seven.
But you did change the colors and in every single map, they were all different colors, so.
Because that's what they represent different things.
Yeah, they, so this.
Representing cities, one is our old district and one is school districts.
School districts.
There are different colors because there's different things they're representing.
We under, I understand that TJ. I look at maps a lot. I, I think it's a little confusing the way it's done. It's pretty clear. That, pretty clear. It's a little confusing.
Yeah.
It is.
What, there, I was told that we could not put areas like Air Four, but here on the current map from last time, you have one, two, three, four, and it is arranged to, to our areas. I'm not, if there is a reason that we're doing it this way, then, and we have to do it this way, then I accept it. But if we don't have to do it this way, can we just stay the same between Plan One, Two and Three? With either letters or numbers and keep them in the same area or same number?
We've tried, we've tried to do that as much as we can between these.
All right. Then I have to, I studied this a lot. It, it was confusing. I don't know if this, the rest of the board agree?
Well, I, it, it never was stated that they're, you know, that, that they're different colors because one's cities and one's school districts and the other is supposed to look like a district now. It just never said that. So, so.
Yeah, Marsha, it's in the green header on every map. It tells you what it's doing.
Well, I know, I know, I know what each one's doing. I know that, but it didn't say why they changed the color. It, it says what each map is doing.
You have, you have to change the colors because you have different numbers of things that you're representing. In one, it's seven districts and another it's nine cities and another it's eight school districts. So they've got to have different colors because there's different numbers of things they're representing.
Yeah, but they're different maps. Like one, they're, they're completely different maps, you know, they're, they're different, different configurations. They, they, they could have used the same colors. I, I, I still think it, I, I still think that they could have because they're, 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 you know.
No, you couldn't.
One of the, one of the things that helped me was, and I haven't, here is the freeway. Where the freeways are. That's really helped me a lot.
I can't see it yet. I've got written. Okay, thank you.
But, but I, I'm just wondering, you know, you say the criteria to set it up is that they all have to be ra, relative, relatively equal in size. They have to be contiguous. They have to be compact, compact, maintain communities of interest and follow city, county or local government lines. So I mean, I understand that's the criteria. So I would think you, and even in all the maps, they should try to keep communities of interest together, possibly cities together, if they could keep the cities together. I think that's, that should be something that should be followed in, in all the maps.
Well, that's what we've done by giving you option. Each of them has one of the, one of the governmental entities as the priority. So priority prioritizes keeping cities together. Plan Two prioritizes keeping USDs together. And then I know Plan Three makes a lot of changes to your current lines, but we tried to use as much as we could in drop, just that you, the district overall had such uneven growth that really just the northern side of the district kind of kept its configuration.
Yeah. Well, you know, as you know, we've of course done redistricting every 10 years because we've always done it the year following the census. And the reason you do it is because there's a shift of population and the population, of course, South Orange County. You know, our district has a whole southern 48% of Orange County, so it's an enormous district. But so we've always, we've always broken it up as to districts. And we've always done that and I've been happy to do that, but it, it wasn't really very important until now, when we're breaking it up into districts and we're running in districts. So then it's even more important that they, they maintain the communities of interest together because prior to that, we're running at large. We, we run for the entire district. So every citizen or every voter and every constituent in the community felt like they could come to any board member and make a request and they, they're, they're heard. So, so that, that was a good thing and. and make a request and they, they're, they're heard, so, so that, that was a good thing, and now, um, you know, let's say people in a community of interest have a certain feeling of something they want, they might want to come to that board member and ask that board member for some help or some, or at least to listen to them, so I think that's an important thing to try to maintain.
That, that is what we've tried to do, I think one of, one of the challenges is Ben, there hasn't been a lot of community of interest testimony provided. So to create three plans that, um, follow traditional principles, we look to the underlying, um, governmental lines, right, we look to city lines, we look to USD lines, and we look to your current lines, and so that's, that's how we came up with these three plans.
I have a question.
Hey, trustee Inman.
Yes, um, I understand what's going on here, I do have a question about Plan Two. I don't under, and I just probably just need to be educated. Uh, what is the purpose of trying to keep it with the, uh, school districts? Is there that much in a relationship between the school districts and the, and the, and our districts? And even if. Even if there is, it's not really the trustee that is in charge, not in charge, but works with dual enrollment or this or that, I, I don't understand the purpose of two.
I think the idea, um, a lot of community college districts, we're working with twenty-three around the state, have requested like to use USD lines as an underlying, um, unifying principle to create districts. Because you have that relationship then with the trustee over, being like a direct representative of a unified school district, so that unified school districts board can come to, to a trustee or maybe two trustees, if this, um, if it's, if it's USD is split, um, for changes that that may need, may need to happen for dual enrollment or for other, you know, other things that may come up. So that's, that was why we look to the USD lines, um, as a, as a guiding force to create, um, Plan Two.
Thank you.
But it, you know, i- if, if that isn't the case, maybe for, for the South Orange, then you know, you can look to one of the other maps, I would hope.
So, oh, I think TJ has a question.
So TJ, do you have a question?
Yeah, I think, I think first I want to apologize, I misunderstood what people were confused about, and then I just put the maps all together, uh, Chris, it is, it is difficult. Um, there was already some confusion, but if you look at the overlay maps of uh, the three different plans on the current lines, you do change the colors of the districts, and that's where they're getting mixed up.
Yeah.
And I, that, that needs to have been fixed, um. I think, I think to help, uh, alleviate some of what trustee Inman said, uh, I, I mean, we're here to try and figure out which one we want, that's, that's where, this is it, this is the last meeting, so if you don't like map number two, because you don't think we should be aligned to school districts, then we don't go with map number two. I think, I think the simple thing is, for me, my deciding factor, and I don't know if we're, are, are we, are we still in, uh, public hearing?
Yeah, well, I think we're out of the public hearing, are we still in the public hearing? Well.
Public hearing.
Okay.
The whole presentation is part of the public hearing.
So the whole agenda. I'll save my motion and comments for when we are actually voting on the item. Is that, is that coming up?
We'd like to hear your, your ideas now, I'd like to hear it.
Well.
So we can't make a motion until you close the public hearing?
Right, so I, I can't, I can't discuss without a motion.
Okay.
And then, I can't do that until we are out of the public hearing, I think that the key here is, is just the opportunity to ask uh, pertinent questions to, and you're doing that, and you guys are doing a great job of telling me to figure this out, but, but I, I, I just wanted to apologize, I misunderstood what you're saying about colors, because that is, I, I mean, I see it because for me, obviously, uh, the changes from the three proposals
Too much.
to, to the old map don't affect me a great deal, I can see my district or my old district very easily. Uh, but I can see how it'd be confusing for some of the other districts.
Yeah, thank, thank you TJ, I appreciate you saying that, thank you. My, my district seems to change immensely with all three of them, it just, one of them looks like a hippocampus, you know, when I just, it looks just like, like a seahorse, hippocampus, okay, trustee Jamal.
Yeah, TJ, I actually think your district is the least changed out of the seven.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess you're the lucky one. Uh, um, but, uh, uh, point of order to the chancellor, when again is our last day to be able to vote on this item?
So the goal, goal tonight is for you to pick one of these maps.
Okay.
So that at the February, so that's seven days before the February meeting, we can post that map, which will be the map, the final map that you'll vote on. The goal tonight would be to reduce these three to one.
Or come up with our own map, which I don't think you're going to be able to do today.
Right, in which case you'd have to have an assending to settle on that map to forward to the February twenty-eighth meeting.
Yeah, when, when I, when I discuss it with the chancellor, oh, sorry, go ahead.
The decision by February twenty-eighth, because we have to turn it into the county.
Yeah. Yeah.
Actually, it has to go to the, um, the Committee on School Organization to be approved, and then.
What, what's the date of that?
February twenty-eighth is to get to pass your final map. Then it goes to the, um, Orange County Committee on School Organization to be, um, reviewed and approved, and then it goes to the county.
We, we used to have a member of a board that was on that, on that, uh, committee. I, I think it might be Jim Wright, but anyway, um, so, so anyway, I, when I talked to the chancellor about it, um, we should decide on a map today, but if we can't, another fallback position would be for us to decide on a map at our February third trustee, uh, self-evaluation meeting, and then we could bring it back to the board on, on the twenty-eighth, a- and then we have to publicize it seven days before the meeting, so the public is able to look at it and see if they're o- okay with the lines that are drawn, and there's no, I mean, there's no way of actually knowing which are the best lines, we just have to do the best we can, you know? So, isn't that true, trustee, um, chancellor Burke?
Yes.
Okay. I, is, is this a time for us to, to say what we think, or do we wait for us to do this during the meeting, this is the hearing?
I think you want to find out whether or not there's any public comment.
Okay, are there any public comments about, um, any of these three maps or, uh, any question or a problem with any of them or any comments from the public about this, because this has to be an open, public, um, discussion?
There are no public comments.
Oh, I think trustee Melchiker, you can close the public hearing now and then go on with your discussion as a board.
Okay, so right now.
Can, can I just say something, Marsha?
Yes, for sure.
Um, I'm looking at our notes from our last meeting, and, uh, trustee Jay was very right, if you look at these maps and the individual areas from the districts that they're showing, uh, look for the ones that I believe, um, the chancellor and Grace put together, the freeways, I bless your heart for doing all of this. Um, it really helps you better see where you belong. So if you're going to go over these, use the maps that have the freeways on them. And they're all coded in color, thank you for doing that.
I, I spent a lot of time looking at the maps this week, too.
Yeah, but the ones with the, with the freeways.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any further discussion on this map, are there, I, no other, a public person wants to make any comment, no? Um, i- is there any further discussion on this by the Board of Trustees? Seeing no further, uh, public comment or discussion from the Board of Trustees, the hearing is now closed. And now we're moving towards this particular agenda item. So, um, I'd like to say something, I don't know if anybody, okay, trustee Pendergast, would you like to say something?
Well, just to, in keeping with pro- protocol, uh, before we can discuss them, you have to have a motion and a second on a map. So I'm going to move, uh, well, yeah, Roberts, you can't discuss without a motion.
We need somebody that knows Roberts Rules of Order, and I think trustee Pendergast knows it, he's correct. You need a motion and a second.
So I'm going to move map number, option number three. And if I have a second, then I will, I will, I will speak to the motion. Um, my preference for this one, uh, is based purely on math. It's the least deviation of the three. Um, it allows for potential, uh, changes in ten years on the next census to be easier, which is why there's so much trouble with this change, is the deviation was so large that, um, it caused this disruption. And so I think for future purposes, the tighter the deviation is now, will make it easier in the future. That's my understanding of the math on, uh, the three maps. So that's, that's why I'm proposing that, that change.
Okay, so the motion was made by trustee Prendergast, and it was second by, was trustee secondary?
Inman, Carolyn.
Just the Inman secondary, okay, thank you, and now we're into discussion. Um, I'd like to.
Actually, can I just clarify?
Yes.
Just so for sense of process, if, if this gets voted down, then someone makes a motion for one of the other two. So don't feel like you have to vote yes on this if you don't like it, it's just my motion to put it forward. But it's the easiest way to go through them, if this one passes, then we're done and we move on. But if it doesn't, then someone can propose a different one, but I just laid out my reasons for it.
Okay, if, 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 if this passes, um, I'd like to say that I really have a pretty strong feeling that Laguna Woods is a community of interest. And, um, because it's one of the newest and the oldest cities in California. It was incorporated in nineteen ninety-nine as the thirty-second city, and the average age of its citizens or the people that live there are the oldest by age of any city in, in the country, so it's very unique. Uh, the average age of Laguna Woods residents is seventy-eight. Uh, ninety percent of the city's four square miles is continued, is contained within gated senior citizen community. And the rest of the city, a very small amount, can, can includes three additional senior residential communities and several commercial centers, so it's, it's just, a, a, of, of all the communities of interest, it's within a gated community, it's all senior citizens, people have to be fifty-five years of age or older to live there. That seems like a great community of interest to me, so I would say if, if three is selected, I'd like Laguna Woods to be included in, 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 in map number E where, where it would make sense to be included. So, um, I, I actually like map number one the best, um, uh, because, um, to me, it's, it's a really, it's really good to have, to me, it, it really makes sense to have the cities be included as, as areas of interest, uh, uh, much more than a lot of the other reasons to co- can control them, uh, the people can, from the city council, I know the people like Mission Viejo, think of Settleback College as their college, and then people in Irvine think of Irvine Valley College is, is their, uh, it's college, and even on today's, today's presidential report, um, the president of Irvine Valley College is working with the city of Irvine to create, um, a zone of interest for a high-tech industry in, in Irvine, so I think the cities really have, you know, when you talk about geopolitical, they, they really have a lot to do with, with the areas of interest and, and the areas that the trustees will run from, so that's, that's my feeling, so I, I would be in favor of area one, um, because I think it really is a, um, community of interest and the, and the, and the trustee that represents that particular city can work with the constituents in that city to help formulate partnerships between the cities and, and, and their particular area. Okay, trustee Jay.
Uh, I, I look at, uh, map number one, and it's Laguna Beach, and it goes all the way up, and IVC is in the Irvine Valley College is in that district of Laguna Beach. Now, I just, I just don't think that's right. I look at the freeways and everything, and the freeway map is what, uh, was greatest for me to make up my decisions, so I, I just can't see Irvine Valley College in the Laguna Beach, uh, area, so I am for, uh, map number three.
Uh, point, point of order, the, the motion on the table is map three, so you're really supposed to speak on why you like or don't like map three, and why you are going to vote yes or no on it, and then we can vote on it, and then you can talk about other maps.
I'm, I'm going to vote no on map, um, three, um, except if it's possible to put Laguna Woods as a community of interest in it, to change the map and add Laguna Woods as a community of interest, then I, then I would consider it, thanks.
Okay, I'll go, um. I, I actually don't like any of the maps, but of the, of the three, I mean, um, we all look at it for what we currently represent, my district gets sliced and diced. Uh, my current area seven is all of Mission Viejo, my home city, uh, where I live, and all of Rancho Santa Margarita, and those are now split up in, in all of the maps. Um, I don't love that, um, but I, I think, so I wouldn't, there's neither one of, neither, none of the, these maps would be my first choice, but of the what's presented to us, I'm inclined to support, uh, District, uh, Three, that were, that there's a motion and a second on. You know, it seems to mostly align with, um, somewhat with the, somewhat with the former boundaries, it does keeps, I can't say it keeps all communities together, because we're, we're, we're sliced, um, quite a bit up in this map, but in the interest of moving forward, um, I would support, I'm going to vote yes on, on the, on Plan Three.
Okay, trustee Prendergast, is your hand still up?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that, just to, uh, uh, and actually go to comments that were made earlier by a couple other trustees. You know, when we used to be at large, there was a sense of representing more than just where you live.
Right.
Um, and I think this map actually makes that more like the old, like, like even my district that hasn't changed much incorporates three, three cities. Um, so, so where you're saying, oh, you can work with community members more, now I have three cities I can work with instead of just one, with one of the, with the other, I think it was map two, so, so I actually think this keeps us more in line with kind of being able to be out there for more than just one city or one school district or one, one entity, and be more in tune with a larger, like a, more groups.
Okay, well, I, I have to say that, that, uh, map three really doesn't look anything like my district has been for many, many, many years, really, very, very, just a little, tiny little part of it, and, and it goes all the way up into a whole area that I've never considered my part, and it takes away a whole area that I've always considered my constituents and I've worked for and I worked with them all these years, so I, I, I just, um, I'm just, it, it just doesn't feel good to me, but you know, if I, I, there's no way of knowing, as I said before, which district is going to be better for any trustee, we just have to go, go with it and just see, make it, make it work for us, you know, so, so I just, I just, I just don't like the configuration of, of area three, and of course, everybody will look at their own district and see how it feels, you know, everybody, and that's human nature, people can't help it, but, um, we're going to work, do our best for the colleges and for our constituents, no matter what district we get, of course. Okay, are there any other comments?
I have a question, two questions that maybe the board can enlighten me. Um, if you look at E and F on Plan Three as we are discussing, and you look at the population, is it possible for, um, area E to, excuse me, is it possible for area F to give up Laguna Woods and keep that as an entity because the population is greater in F as it stands now? So he could use more population, so is that one, the question is, is that possible? And two, when we look at all of these, when will we really? And two, when we look at all of these, when will we really know where it stops? Where my district begins and president, or excuse me, trustee Jamal's area ends?
It'll be a, it'll be a street map.
You have to go on the street map then, okay?
Of course.
Which, yeah, I see that, okay.
So, just to, to answer.
Possible?
To, to answer the question, if you unify Laguna Woods into District E, you would cut off the southern portion of District F. So it would, um, you, it wouldn't be possible because you'd all, you'd also have to move all of the portion of Laguna Beach and Ridge, Ridge Crest um, into E. I think that would overpopulate E and underpopulate F, but I need to check.
Okay.
Have a motion in a second unless.
All right.
I'm, I've.
Move on.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. So uh, wait, trustee Inman, you have a question?
Uh, not really. I'm just in favor of three. Because I think keeping, and it does for a lot of them, keeping what we have is less confusing for most of the um, most of us, most of the trustees. And it doesn't look, some of these look like, I've got one on my um, iPad and then I've got my computer open. And C, it looks like some kind of rare sea creature. I mean, it just goes on and on and I just think C in this is better. Well, all of them are better.
Yeah.
So.
No, nothing.
So Chris, can, can you check into that um, later on if we vote on it? I can make a motion to maybe look into that?
Well, we already have a motion on the table, Marsha. We need to.
That's it. So I could make a, um, I don't know if I could make a motion or just have him look into it afterwards.
Well, we have to vote this first.
No, of course. You're asking if it was possible. That's what I was asking. Chris, is your hand still up? Oh, you're, you're muted.
Sorry, no, I, I just wanted to answer that, that specific question. I just don't think it's possible to do that. And have a plan that's within ten percent deviation.
Okay, so, so, so um, can we vote?
I think, I think trustee Jamal has called the question.
Yeah. Okay, so Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher.
Nay.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, so it passes.
I, I do have, I have a, a question now that we've got a map kind of zoned in for Chris. When, when we do the final vote in February, will the numbers be on there this time instead of the letters?
We can do it a couple of different ways. If you'd like um, to add, to make a motion to make A1, B2, et cetera. We can do that, or you can do it after you pass the map. You can just order them, the districts as you want. It's up, it's really up to the trustees.
I think it's important that we try and keep the voting rotation the same based on the numbers we have now to be closely aligned with what, what seats the current trustees are in. So that, so that it's not confusing for voters and not confusing for the trustees themselves. And to be honest, you know, little self-serving, I still have my committee that says trustee for area two, so.
We.
Number change, I'd have to pay all these fees and.
Yeah, no, we can totally do that. If that's the, the, the will of the board, we'll just renumber them to assign to the right trust number.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
Does that, is that, okay.
Do we have to do a formal vote on that?
I don't, I don't think so, but I would defer to your legal counsel. I think you've given us good, given me guidance, so I'm good.
I think to be safe, you should do a motion in a second. Then it's in the record.
Okay.
I second.
I move it. So.
State the motion again. State your motion.
To bring the map to us in February with our district numbers on them instead of letters.
Can I ask, Chris, if I just look into it?
Yeah, thank you. Good.
I second.
Okay, so um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And, and Chris, I, I'd like you to look into that to see if it's possible. So I don't know if you need a motion now that, that I'd like, like it to be looked into, or you just look into it now?
I can, I'll look into it.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Okay, so I guess we could, thank you. We, we don't need a motion then, right, right? Okay, cool. Okay, so we'll move on then. Thank you. Um, our, our next, our next agenda item is the um, resolution authorizing remote teleconferencing of board meetings pursuant, pursuant to AB three sixty-one to make sure that we could have this meeting um, by teleconference. So um, do we have a, a motion in a second?
So, I second it.
Okay, who's made the motion? Oh, trustee Jamal made the motion and trustee Jay seconded. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, then the next is a resolution honoring African-American Black History Month. So, so trustee Jay moved, is there a second?
A second.
Just to in the seconded it. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
I would like to just read the resolution so everybody can hear it.
Okay, great.
Okay, this resolution will declare the month of February as African-American Black History Month to recognize the contributions of Black African-Americans in society and to recognize the disparities in student outcomes in order to move towards greater equity in our education system and the greater community. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Whit Riddell. Um, and, and the next is um, the Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes, which we have in our agenda. So do we have a, a motion in a second for this?
So moved.
Just the, makes the motion and trustee Whit Riddell seconds it. And um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Um, just so clarity, um, on number seven in the minutes, if you just go to the last sentence, you'll find a grammar mistake. So just to clarify that, and you guys can find it and take care of it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and uh, chancellor's, uh, excuse me, item seven point two is the item on the chancellor's search process. And um, first, we're going to um, approve the chancellor position brochure, which I thought was lovely. And um, then appoint a board designee, which is defined in the administrative state of uh, resident regulation as a member of the chancellor executive committee. Of course, uh, academic center, Margot Lovett had a concern, but we could address her concern um, as we discuss it. Okay, thank you. So chancellor, who, who is discussing this? Is it Chancellor Burke? Or is it Vice Chancellor Gable?
So there are a number of things that are before you. You, um, you need to pick a designee. As you stated, you need to have a conversation about the one recommendation before you for a community member to be on the, on the search committee. And then any comments related to the brochure. And I believe that uh, to make the two colleges' statements sound similar, Dr. Hernandez had some things that he wanted to say in relationship to that. So you would pick the order of business that you'd like to handle those in, trustee Miltucher.
Okay, um, I, I think we could discuss the brochure first. Did, was it um, Dr. Hernandez that wanted to speak to the brochure? Is that it?
Yes, I believe so. That was my understanding from late this afternoon.
Okay. Hi.
Hello, Board President, Miltucher. I submitted a minor non-substantive revision to better align the descriptions of both colleges. I provided an annual head count to mirror what was currently provided in the Saddleback College description. I also provided just a brief blurb on the, it's less than a sentence on our curricular, uh, co-curricular offerings, again, to mirror the Saddleback College um, description. And then I asked for an edit um, to clarify that we are Annapese Asian-American Native American Pacific Islander-serving institution, not an Asian uh, American-serving institution as appears in the current draft. So I think they're pretty non-substantive changes. Again, the intent was to better align the descriptions between both colleges. So I submitted some minor revisions for Irvine Valley College description.
That sounds excellent. I, I didn't, who, who did the brochure? Nobody seems to know who did the brochure. Do you know? Who's the one that created? Who did it?
Well, I think it was based on the prior brochure.
I mean, who, who's the one that designed it?
The prior.
So it's a combination of human resources and um, public information and Letitia Clark's area. Human Resources took the content from the last brochure. Uh, and thank you, Dr. Hernandez, for providing those um, updates. We received those late this afternoon. And if the board has no concerns about them, we will incorporate them into a new brochure, which just updates what we produced three years ago, three and a half years ago.
Yeah, I, I thought that they were excellent suggestions. So it did, it did say that Irvine Valley College is an Asian-serving institution. It didn't mention Annapese at all. And it didn't mention the other um, groups that Irvine, Irvine Valley College serves. So, and, and even Saddleback. So I thought those were good suggestions. But it was, it was a um, pretty brochure and substantive. But, but having the number of students is, is important too. I think it's really important how many students, students we serve.
So we also, we also received a recommendation from trustee Jamal to uh, put more in about ATEP and what we offer there. So we are also working on that. So that what appears for ATEP is more than just one sentence.
That's excellent, because it's certainly an area of great growth right now in our district. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Jamal, for doing that. Okay, there any other comments on, on, on the brochure?
But the chancellor just raised one of, are we just talking about the brochure at the moment?
Right now, sure. And then you're talking about the person.
Yes, thank you for, I thought ATEP needed a little bit more heft to it in terms of what we do there and the vision there. That'll be helpful. Um, then I had a, um, I just had a suggestion. I thought that the two, um, trying to pull up the brochure, it's really hard on my iPad to do the board docs agenda. Um, but uh, I thought the two front-facing photos maybe should be different for Saddleback and IVC. But I, I really, I guess defer that to the colleges. I just, I don't know if it captured the best of image we want of both, but maybe it does.
And then, and then when we get the brochure, are, are you gonna send it to the board to uh, for approval? When they update the brochure?
Well, if we wait for approval, then it will be another month before it goes out.
I'm not, I'm not talking about like official approval. We'll just send it to the board. Look at, yeah, yeah. Not, not vote on it to the board. I don't, I don't think we have to vote on a, on a brochure at the board.
Well, no, we should, we should approve the item tonight.
Yeah, we should approve the item, but then, you know, when we get the updated brochure, just take a look at it. Make sure it's okay with us, but not vote on it, because we'll vote on it today. I agree with you. Okay, trustee Whit Riddell.
Yes, um, I'd like to ask the chancellor then. Is it difficult to change pictures? I know you're gonna change content of wording, but is it difficult to throw in different pictures?
No, we can put in different pictures.
Yes, um, I don't know. I guess I would not guess. I would like to ask Dr. Hernandez. The picture of IVC on the back page, I think we can do a lot better than that. I mean, I was stunned when I saw that.
I would agree.
I mean, it looked like a red barn. I'm sorry. Um, I just, I, I truly was stunned. And I'm very proud of IVC. It's a beautiful campus. So in somewhere, throw in there our logo, uh, we care. And um, also the front, um, an, an area with grass and flags. I, I don't know how that represents all the students on campus. And I know the Veteran Memorial is wonderful, but I, I wanna sell, we can put that in the words, but I wanna sell the college. And what's the expression? We're, you know, pictures are, are phenomenal as opposed to words. So the picture of the ocean there or something, I mean, that's just a typical ocean. What makes California, what makes our ocean, um, our shoreline a bit different? I don't know, an aerial view, something, just grab someone, you know, they go, ah. Okay, that's my, you could get rid of those ribbons or whatever it is on the bottom to add more real estate if you need it. So I'm not trying to be critical. I just wanna sell um, our colleges with this brochure. Thank you.
So Letitia's group has already swapped out pictures.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, great.
You'll see that, you'll see new pictures when you see the, when we finalize this.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And, and so I think we're, we're, we're okay with the brochure. It's, it's a lovely brochure, but with the added suggestions from people here, from professor, from the professors and from the college presidents and the board members, I think it'll be even better. So thanks. And um, then, are, are your hands that are up for the next item or there's just still up?
So you have two other things to deal with on this one. You need the, you needed to have the discussion about the community member being on the committee.
Yeah, there was, uh, next, we're, we're talking about the community member being on the committee. And I think there was um, one community member, uh, do you wanna mention who, who it was, that trustee Chancellor Burke?
Lisa Greenberg.
Yeah, that's what.
Kennedy Greenberg was the one name that we received.
Yeah, we received one name, Lisa Greenberg, and she's um, president of the um,
Was.
That was the president of Irvine Valley College Foundation for many.
She isn't any longer.
Isn't. Um, are there any questions? I think she's.
Excellent.
Wonderful community member, actually.
Has she accepted that? Has anybody asked her?
Yes.
Yes, we did check with her.
Okay, excellent choice.
And does, does she?
I can run down the street real quick and knock on the door.
Yeah, she lives right next to you, right?
So can I just say something? Cause I, I think, um,
Yes.
Uh, I am supportive of a community member. I actually, um, I, I, I do respect Professor Lovett. Um, I think this is one, an area we probably wouldn't agree on, but I, I think it's so important. And I, I'm, I'm glad that we have the opportunity to have a community member on the search committee. Lisa Kennedy Greenberg is outstanding. I mean, I, I couldn't, I couldn't think of a better representative of the community on the search committee. She also received, I think, the first ever chancellor's award, uh, awarded by Chancellor Burke a couple of years ago for her work on Title V. She was an amazing representative of Irvine Valley College's foundation. Um, I don't think she'll be biased. I think she'll look at the district as a whole. I think we're lucky to have her. I actually had the opportunity to serve as a community member on a number of searches uh, conducted by the Orange County Department of Education with their top administrators, their senior staff. I did, I was involved. top administrators, their senior staff. I did, I was involved in a number of searches as a community member, and it was extremely valuable. Very respectful. I, you know, I worked with their FTEs, and I was the outsider, but we worked together as a team. And it just provided, I think my input was valuable to them and their input was valuable to me, because we both came at it from perspective of trying to find the best person for that position. And we are a community college. And I, I mean, I'm just so excited about the opportunity to have someone like Lisa on this committee.
Yeah, I also think that she has been working with our colleges for so many years and loves our colleges so much and supports our colleges and supports Irvine Valley College. I don't, knowing her, I know you know her better than I do. I don't think she's one person that we could worry about divulging important classified information that we're not supposed to talk about it. I think we could explain it to her, and I think she'll, she'll be very good in that. I feel very confident in that. Okay, Terry, what, Riddell? Do you, trustee Riddell?
Um, well, I was interested when, when our, when our faculty has concern, I wanted to know, besides divulging information, what were some of the other concerns? I mean, I want to know before we, I vote on this.
I think, I think that was the concern, and it is a real concern. Do we, will our community, you know, our staff members, our board members, they, they won't divulge information that they could really lose their job if they do. The board members can't, but the board members have been pretty good in the last few years. But, but I guess community members can't, so they really have, is, is, is Margot here still that she could mention it? Because I think that was her main concern, that they would divulge certainly information about that that's certainly not supposed to be divulged.
Margot is here and has just been promoted to be a panelist. How about that?
Hey, hi, Margot. Thank you.
Hi. So yeah, let me, let me clarify. So trustee Jamal, I'm not opposed to having a community member on the search committee. So let me, let me just get that clear. And I think that President Milchiker did express my reservations, which are, you know, people say things unintentionally all the time because district employees, essentially, when we're appointed to search committees, we sign something that says, you know, we will not, we will respect confidentiality, and we understand that there are repercussions should we breach it. You, there's no repercussions for a community member. And, and I know that, you know, this district, like other districts, has been on the receiving end of its share of litigation. And I'm just trying to avoid that happening again. So that's my only concern, honestly, is that, that, you know, something inadvertently might be said, and we are a litigious society. And that might put the board and the district in a position we really don't want it to be in. So that, that was really my concern.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Did you have any other comments, trustee Whit Riddell?
No, no. Do we vote on this?
Well, I just had another quick comment. And I think some of you know this already. I've, I was very surprised when I started in the district how little of a role the Board of Trustees had in, in the chancellor's search process. It really surprised me, but I, now I understand it a lot better. I think there was a very bad relationship between prior boards of trustees and, you know, staff and faculty and even the administration. It is the only employee, the only employee that we hire and supervise. And I think I really want to thank Anne Marie and B. Park for coming up with a really compromised. Honestly, it doesn't go as far as I would like in terms of the board's role, because I feel like we are elected to represent this district, and we only have one employee. And I know that one time we even had a failed chancellor search, and, and I know that a lot of us are, we're in the dark. And we have very little role, very little oversight and input over the process as it's going on. But I think what's, what the revised compromise of some of the language in the search process that we come up with is, is acceptable. I think it gets us in a, in a good place, and I think we've worked hard to ensure there's a balance in here. But knowing it is our employee, I mean, I think that's, I mean, that's really the underlying issue here is that whoever comes in as chancellor, it's our responsibility as the Board of Trustees to hire, supervise, and if needed, terminate person who's in position of chancellor. So I thought the compromised language that was, that is in here is good. And I thank, I thank B. Park, I thank Anne Marie, and for those who worked on it.
You, you worked very hard on, on, on that in, in your board subcommittee, I think. So. So do you, do you feel still comfortable going ahead with, with appointing a community member?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion and a second for, for doing?
You have to, you, you can either make a motion to break up the item, but I think it's easier to just go through each three of the parts and then vote on it as a whole. So you've got the brochure done, you've got a community member, you just need our designee.
Our designee?
Yes, the board designee to help.
Board designee.
Oversee.
Yeah, the board designated, yeah, to oversee the to oversee the chancellor recruitment process. So you're saying trustee Prendergast, you're saying we should vote on them each separately?
One option is to vote on them separately, but since you've already discussed who, you might as well just do the third one and vote as a whole.
Okay, I actually really understand the academic center president's love's concern. I just feel this, this candidate
Is outstanding.
Is outstanding in that she has, you know, testified on Title V at, at the Board of Governors, and that she will really be careful and not talk out of, talk about things out of, you know, she'll, she'll be very quiet about things. I feel that, that way. So now, so now we're moving on to number three. So what we need to do now is to pick a member of the chancellor's executive committee to oversee the chancellor recruitment process. So that's the third item that we have to do. No?
Yes.
Yes, I had, I had some people shaking their heads, no.
Oversee it, or?
Yes, this is not the committee chair. This is just someone who keeps the trains running on time.
So it would be like one of the vice chancellors. Is that what, what we're, we're doing? Is that?
It could be me, it could be one of the vice chancellors, it could be one of the presidents. But you'd have to make sure that of all those people, only one of us, you know, is not applying for the job.
I see.
Okay.
Well, I think I know one person who's not applying for the job that might be good for it.
Who's that? I think I know the same person, but what do you?
I, I would say the outgoing chancellor might be.
What do other board members think? Do other board members have any?
Yeah.
Who, who did the overseeing last time? Wasn't it Anne Marie?
No, she was, she was barely hired herself.
Oh.
I don't know if we had someone overseeing. I don't remember that.
It was Tom Fallow.
It was Tom Fallow.
Tom Fallow was acting chancellor.
The same kind of thing. You'd have your current chancellor as overseeing, looking for a replacement.
Okay, okay, because you were the board president at that time, so you would, you would have known that. So, thanks. So that, that makes sense to, to, how do you feel about, well, Chancellor Burke, would you be willing to do that? She's thinking about it. Would, would you be willing to?
I said yes, I said yes.
Okay, yes, okay. So are there any other comments from any board members? And this is just to make sure that, that, that things go smoothly, that there's that we're overseeing the chancellor recruitment process, making sure that we are recruiting people, making sure that things are going you know, ethically and.
Informed of the process.
Yeah, everyone's informed. It's done ethically. Nobody is, you know, everything's done above board and openly and with all the constituents involved. So that's really important.
Right, so I move that we appoint the chancellor as the designee. We appoint Lisa Kelly Greenberg.
Kennedy Greenberg, it's okay.
Kennedy, sorry, Kennedy Greenberg as a community representative, and that we approve the brochure with amendments and changes.
Great, is there a second? Trustee Prendergast makes the motion. Trustee J. seconds it. And Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Second.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
He's still here?
Oh.
He might not be here, because I don't know who SOCCTT is. That's not him, I don't think.
No, that's Kristen. He, he did fall off.
Fell off, okay. They were having some trouble, some trouble with the connections, though.
Okay, I will mark him absent.
Okay.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
So it passes unanimously with one trustee absent. So we're moving forward with the chancellor's search process. Great. Okay, the next one, CCT Board of Directors.
I want to take a motion on extending the meeting.
Okay, can I have?
I don't think you'll get finished in 24 minutes.
No, I think you're right. So.
Move to extend the meeting to, where are we in the agenda?
Seven point seven three.
Okay, gosh, I guess nine thirty? We're not taking a break, or are we taking a break?
I, I think not, until, unless nine thirty, we'll take a break, but we'll try to speed through if we can. Try to be nice. I mean, with ensuring, getting all the information done, of course, obviously.
Okay, I move to extend to nine thirty.
I second it.
Okay, trustee Jamal makes the motion, and trustee J. seconded it to extend the movie till, meeting till nine thirty, and we will all talk fast. So Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright, I hear is in attendance.
I, I'm here.
Okay, great. You say aye, and this is to extend the meeting till nine. Okay, great, thanks.
And student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, so it's unanimous that we're, welcome back. Anyway, now we're moving to, for the CCT Board of Directors. And we would like to know if anyone on our board would like to run, or if there are any nominations from the board to, to run for the CCT Board of Directors.
No.
No, I was going to nominate you, trustee Prendergast. How about, how about?
Raise my hand.
Yeah, trustee Inman, will you be interested?
Not at this time. I think that it's, it's not a good time, since we haven't had the opportunity, especially a new person has not had the opportunity to go to events and meet people. However, there is someone that has gone to a lot of events and met people. And I would like to nominate trustee Milchiker.
Really?
Second.
Okay, maybe I'll try it. Okay. I wasn't expecting that, but thank you. You sure you don't want to do it?
Not yet.
Okay.
Maybe later.
Okay. I could, I could go for it and see what happens. It'd be good to have someone from.
Marsha.
What?
Do you want it? Do you want to do it?
I guess I'll try, unless you want it. Do you want to do it?
No.
No, Marsha, someone needs to break this losing streak.
Yeah.
Why not you?
Okay, okay, I'll try. I think we'll keep, I'll just keep on losing. That's what I think, but anyway.
This, this kind of thing is built on so much networking. And needless to say, you have more networking than probably the other six of us put together. But certainly more than, than anyone. And I think you would make a good, a good candidate.
Okay, thank you for your, I appreciate your confidence in me. Thank you. Unless somebody else wants to do it. If anybody wants to do it, anybody. Trustee Whit, do you want to do it? No?
No.
Okay, okay. So what about trustee Jamal? You don't want to do it? It could not. What?
No, no, thank.
Okay, so, so I guess I'll accept. So do you need to take a vote on it, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I move that we nominate, wait, I, yeah, I move that we choose Marsha Milchiker, trustee Milchiker to be our candidate for the CCT Board of Directors.
Yeah, I think we already have a motion and a second, but I'll second it again.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Madam, well, thank you for your confidence. We'll see what, what happens. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Staying, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, and, and the next item is the board policy revision, and this is for approval. And there's four board policies. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee J. makes the motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Trustee Inman seconded, and I know that our subcommittee actually approved these, and they all look pretty good to me. So with no comment, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, the, the next one is the board policy revision. This is for review and study, and they all look good to me. So is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee J. makes the motion, and is there a second? And trustee Inman seconded. So Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then the next one is a presentation and acceptance of the district foundation of the two districts, the district and the two colleges' foundation audits. So is there a motion and a second for this, and then we'll have the presentation?
So moved.
Trustee Jamal makes the motion, and trustee Inman seconded it. And I think we'll have the presentation now. Is there a presentation, or are these just, oh, there it is. Okay, hi.
Hi, good evening. I have, there is a PowerPoint presentation. If somebody will share the screen.
All right, I think Grace is going to be bringing that up. While she's doing that, I'll introduce Heather McGee, who is a signing director with Clifton Larson Allen. And she led our audit this time, so she's going to give us an update on the district audit report, as well as the foundation for the district, the review report, and then both of the Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College foundations themselves. So I will turn it over to Heather, but I will be here in case you guys have questions at the end.
Okay, thank you very much, Anne Marie. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me join you tonight. I promise this will be a quick presentation. We did meet with the audit committee, and we went through all the reports in detail back in December thirteenth. So the purpose of tonight is just to kind of circle back and give you the highlights of the finalized report. And I just want to point out, normally we do come and present the audit report in December. And there was an extension granted by the chancellor's office to February twenty eighth, again, which happened last year, really as a result of the compliance supplement, which is your federal programs. If you turn to the next page, we'll get into the audit report. So the primary reason why an audit is prepared is that somebody not associated with the entity can look at the numbers and give some level of assurance on those numbers. So the, the opinion that you have received is an unmodified opinion, and that is the highest opinion that you can receive. So basically what that is saying, that in, that the financial statements are presented in material respects. Next slide, please. Another key page to point out to you is if there were Another key page to point out to you is if there were any audit adjustments. So there is a reconciliation in your financial statements in which it indicates that there were no audit adjustments. So what was reported on the CCF S three eleven matches with the financial statements. The financial statements do go through a conversion process to apply certain accruals in accordance with governmental accounting standards. And so there's also a reconciliation for those transactions. Next slide, please. So your audit report actually has four letters. So the opinion letter is in the very front of the report where the next three set of letters are in the back, and they all have a specific purpose. The first letter has to do with reporting over internal controls. As a government agency, we have to review the financials and internal controls in accordance with governmental auditing standards. There's also a letter that has to do with major programs, and this has to do with your federal compliance, as well as a state compliance letter. So for the federal and the state compliance letter, they are unmodified opinions. And for the internal control letters, there is no deficiencies in internal controls. Next slide, please. So another key area to look at in your financial statements has to do with findings. So kind of following the same format as the last three letters, there are no financial statement findings, and there are no state compliance findings. However, there were three federal compliance findings, and again, we did go through those in detail and talked with the audit committee regarding these findings. Next page, please. And your report will also follow up if there's any, what the status is on your prior, your findings. So there were two findings that were not considered fully implemented. And a lot of times that will happen in a special student financial aid. You get the, you get the observations already halfway through the year. You come up with a plan to implement those corrective actions, and then it still takes a full cycle to get through all of those implementations. So next year, we're hopeful that we'll see that those findings have been resolved. But if they're, if they're not, then we'll actually report on the status of those. Next slide, please. And lastly, the foundation audits. So as Anne Marie had mentioned, we do a review audit for the district foundation. Review is a little bit different than an audit in that we don't give an opinion on it. But the, but the language on the letter, it refers to no material modifications, which basically means the numbers that were presented to us, we do some analytical steps, but we don't dive into the internal controls over those numbers. But no material modification, so those numbers match the numbers in the general ledger reporting system. For Irvine Valley and Saddleback College, an audit was performed, and both of those foundations have received an unmodified opinion. As you can see from our matrix, Irvine Valley had no audit adjustments and no management letters. While Saddleback also had no management letter, they did have an audit adjustment, but it was technically, it was under the threshold of requiring to be recognized in the financial statement, but management had chosen to go ahead and recognize that and include it in those numbers. Next slide, please. So that's a quick summary of the four financial statements that we've prepared for you, and if there's any specific questions, I will open that up.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I know our audit committee already listened to the, okay, trustee Pendergast.
No question. I just wanted to thank trustee Jamal and trustee Wright for their participation in the process and their comments in the meeting were very helpful, and I think Heather can speak to that as well, but thank you.
Excellent, and you're in the committee as well, right? So.
Yes.
Thank you.
He's the chair. Thank you for your work as chair.
Thank the three of you for the hard work of going through everything, being in the audit committee, so we don't, saves us a lot of work, thank you. So are there any other questions? No, I think it was a good report for both of our foundations and even the district foundation, so it looks good, and everything was corrected, even the three findings, right? Okay, thank you. So thank you for your presentation, and do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jay made the motion, is there a second? Trustee Jamal seconded it, and madam secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
I.
Trustee Jay.
I.
Trustee Jamal.
I.
Trustee Melchiker.
I.
Trustee Pendergast.
I.
Trustee Rydell.
I.
Trustee Wright.
I.
Student trustee Mateen.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. And the next is the consent calendar. Do we have a motion and a second for the consent calendar, and then we'll ask people to pull them off?
So moved.
The trustee Jay makes the motion.
You have to ask for polls first.
We ask for polls first, okay, thank you for correcting that, I appreciate it. Okay, thanks. Are there any polls from the consent calendar? Okay, sitting down, that's good. We're moving through the meeting. There were, I'm sure all of us read them all, and they were all good things. So trustee made the motion, is there a second? Trustee Inman seconded, and madam secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
I.
Trustee Jay.
I.
Trustee Jamal.
I.
Trustee Melchiker.
I.
Trustee Pendergast.
I.
Trustee Rydell.
I.
Trustee Wright.
I.
Student trustee Mateen.
I.
Excellent, some of them were so good, I wanted to pull them off and just to broadcast them, but I didn't. The next item is ten point one. Irvine Valley College Live Oak terraces, they're, they're, they're doing audio visual upgrades to make it really good for commencements and all kinds of other college events. So, and they're spending seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars on it. So is there a motion and a second for that?
So moved.
I move trustee Jay, is there a second?
I second.
All right.
Okay, trustee Rydell seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, madam secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
I.
Trustee Jay.
I.
Trustee Jamal.
I.
Trustee Melchiker.
I.
Trustee Pendergast.
I.
Trustee Rydell.
I.
Trustee Wright.
I.
Student trustee Mateen.
Hi.
Okay, item ten point two is awarded food vending service. There'd be one vending machine at each college to every table where they're going to have food in these vending machines for our students. Is there a motion and a second for this?
A motion.
Trustee Pendergast made a motion, and trustee Jamal, did you second it, or? No, is there a second?
I.
Okay, trustee Wright seconded. Okay, are there any comments or questions?
I have a comment, so.
Trustee Jamal.
My, my comment is not related to whether this is a, something that is worthy of approval. I think the dollar amounts, you know, we're talking about here are, are actually very small, and I got some clarification today from Anne Marie that we're talking about a pretty small amount of money for two separate vending machines on the campuses of IVC and Saddleback, and I, I, you know, I think to the extent we can, you know, find healthier foods for our students, that's something we need to strive to do. Whether it's done through the vending machines or the cafeterias, I think that's a campus question, you know, on the college, question for the colleges to address. And I, and I, but, you know, at my, at my core, I have problems with, you know, the appearance of what could be construed as favoritism or nepotism. And I'm not saying that has occurred in this instance. I don't think it has. And I think there was some disclosures, and we saw it in the item. The disclosures were made, they were publicly made, we all could see them. But I wouldn't be true to myself. I wouldn't be true to what I've done, you know, throughout my life. It wouldn't be true to, whether it's ten dollars or ten million. I, I think that, you know, I think this is perhaps too much of a sanctimonious idealist side of me, that I feel like we have to strive to separate out what could be an appearance of favoritism. And I say that, having said, I think the selection committee who decided on the vendor, in this case, I think they did their job. And it could very well be that the vendor that was chosen was the right one, given the candidates that were before them. But I think you, you, you guys hear me talk at these committee meetings about cronyism and nepotism and favoritism, and not just here, but around the world, and and I, for that, for those reasons, I cannot support this item, so I'll be voting no.
Are there any other comments?
Um, can I just say that I appreciate the time that was put into this? I just had a, I, I, I didn't find the fee to the district, how it was explained, to be very transparent. I did take the time and looked up every one of the vendors that were shown here and tried to help understand it better, although that was some work, but it didn't help to understand the fee to the district. So just asking, we're always looking at the lowest cost, and I, I couldn't evaluate that. I just didn't have the time to call in today, I just didn't. But maybe next time, just explain it a little bit more. Thank you.
I think there's somebody here to explain it, but Priya's here. Did she want to explain it? I see she's, she's up.
Were you?
Do you want her to explain it? Is that it?
Are you, or is Anne Marie going to do it?
I, I can, and then if we need more detail, we can have Priya go into it. The so I would say food services in general right now is extremely hard to contract for. You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic, so all of the food service contracts, you know, really up and down the state in the colleges are struggling. So we went out, we did the RFP, we received the four responses, and we actually tried to negotiate with all four of the vendors. We ended up, we've awarded one contract for coffee and tea, and then with the other three vendors, it really came down to this vendor in particular, every table was the least cost to the district. It's two hundred and fifty dollars per month, per machine. We're planning on having one machine at each college, kind of as a trial run. So the total district cost that we're looking at right now is six thousand dollars. The other two vendors that would provide food in a vending machine of this type, one of them was deemed non-responsive when we started to negotiate with them. The other one would not come down from their minimum guaranteed sales. They wanted a guarantee of four thousand dollars per month, per machine of sales of the vending machine, and we just couldn't guarantee that. You know, that's on average at least five hundred meals per month, and we weren't really sure that the market is going to be there for these machines. And that was really what drove us to recommending the vendor that we're recommending, and then putting the disclaimer in there. The board was fully aware that there was a potential conflict with an employee who happens to be the president at Saddleback College. But we did follow all of our board policies and administrative regulations when going through this process related to conflict of interest. Does that answer your question, trustee Rydell?
Yes, thank you very, very much.
Yeah. I know it's tough. There are supply chain issues now, there's all kinds of issues. We, you know, when our students come back, we don't know if they want to eat on campus. We just can't predict what exactly will happen next week, let alone next year. So it's, it's tough, it's very tough. Okay, are there any other comments or questions? So do you want to call the question in? So the, the motion was made by trustee Pendergast, the second by trustee Wright, so.
Clarification, are we voting on both vendors?
No, just one vendor, as far as I know, right?
Right, the other one, the other vendor will show up on next month's contract log as a ratification.
I got it, I got it, thank you.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay.
And this one technically could have, we could have done it like that, but we just felt that the uniqueness of the situation is why we put this on open session and didn't put it as a ratification.
So we want to show everyone that the people involved recuse themselves, and it's not a huge amount, it's one machine on each campus, it's two machines, so it's a small amount, and they just didn't. Are there any other comments, your questions? Okay, so madam secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman. Trustee Jay.
I.
Trustee Jamal.
Oh.
Trustee Melchiker.
I.
Trustee Pendergast.
I.
Trustee Rydell.
I.
Trustee Wright.
I.
Student trustee Mateen.
Hi.
Okay, so the next one is awarded professional services for an executive recruitment services for the chancellor position. This is a firm that we're hiring. Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
I so moved.
Trustee, what Rydell makes the motion, is there a second?
I second.
And the trustee Jay seconds it, and there were a number of, this by far was the least expensive of all the firms by, by a lot. One of them was six hundred thousand dollars. So, so does anyone want to speak to this, or just? This is.
Anne Marie would speak to it if you want.
A few words, this is one firm that you're recommending, by far the very least expensive of all the firms by a lot.
I see trustee Pendergast has a question. Can I defer to him?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think you'll probably answer it in your, in your presentation, but we've used PPL before. Not recalling a hundred percent how happy we were, but I have a feeling that we might need some refresher on their performance in the past. I know we've had the discussion why not to use the ACCT, but maybe, maybe refer to that as well.
Thanks, good questions.
Because, I mean, it is cheaper, but sometimes you get what you pay for.
Yeah. Important, important, important position, very important.
Certainly, no problem. So we, again, we did the RFP, we had a committee, which was made up of myself, vice chancellor Biscachill, her executive director of human resources, Kim Widdes, and then her director of employee employer relations, I think, Daniel Hindbug, and pardon?
Director of Recruitment and Employment Services.
Okay. So in evaluating all the proposals, you know, we did look at that. So I think to answer your first question, yes, we have used PPL in the past. Most recently, we use them when we were doing the Irvine Valley College president search. We have a successful candidate that I think we're all pleased with, and John Hernandez with that one. So they worked out very well. We have also used them recently to do in-depth background checks on our candidates. So we use them for both my position when I was hired, as well as for Dr. Stern, when he was hired as Saddleback College president. PPL, they brought to the table three individuals that are going to be working on the recruitment. All of the other ones had two individuals, so they brought forward three key people. Some of the criticism that you've heard in the past about them not being a national firm, I think they have made inroads into trying to change that, and they have relationship with the Aspen Institute, which is an organization that is highly respected throughout community colleges. So they have some ends with that, and will be able to recruit using their ties with the Aspen Institute. The, when we interviewed ACCT. The, when we interviewed ACCT, I think was your other question, trustee Jamal. They didn't, they didn't seem like them or the other firm that we interviewed had really read our proposal and had seen the work that the board had already done. So the responses that they provided were really just standard, I would say, template form responses, just fill in the blank, whereas with PPL had really read. They knew that we had done the job description. You know, they knew all the work that we had done in December as a board. And they addressed that and pointed to that in their proposal as well as in their interview. So I think for all of those reasons, we were impressed with them as well as those costs. So that's why we're bringing forward the recommendation to go with them.
Okay.
So I can comment. So we had the opportunity, Marcia, trustee Milchiker, myself and trustee Witt as part of the executive committee have a separate meeting to discuss the chancellor search process. And we did talk about having an external executive search firm to be part of the process. And we talked about the pros and cons. And is it essential that we have someone like PPL? No, but I think it's helpful. I think they can, they can, and I think to J D earlier point, you know, these firms change personnel all the time. The PPLs we saw from a year ago, the people there are probably different than the ones we're going to see for this search. But I think having that third party not only do background checks, but also as I think vice chancellor Biscachill said, that having candidates that they can bounce some, some, someone they can go to and talk to, ask questions. I think that's helpful as well. So I mean, they're, they're, I wouldn't view them as absolutely integral to the process, but they're definitely, they will play an important role. And I think it's good that, that we'll have someone like that and the price seems reasonable.
Thank you. That answers my question.
That sounds good. Sounds good. Sounds like you did a good job researching. So thanks. I know in the past, I think we interviewed the firms, but you interviewed them and it sounds like you, you did it and kept within our timeline that we set up. Okay, is, are there any other comments or questions? Um, okay, it, it's been, the motion was made and seconded. So madam secretary, can you call the role as to hiring PPL?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 11.1 is academic employee and classified administrative personnel actions. Vice chancellor Biscachill, are there any changes?
There are no changes to this item. However, there is one employment contract. We are asking the board to approve the hiring of the dean of counseling at Irvine Valley College. His name is Dr. Angel Hernandez. The contract dates for his contractor, January 18th, 2022, June 30, 2024, range 22 step three annual salary 180,000. Thank you.
His, his name was on the agenda, but, but you needed to read out the particulars for legal reasons.
Because there's a contract attached, the board is required to hear me verbally say what the terms of the contract are. That's the new law in the state of California. Well, not the new law. It's been the law for a while in the state of California. Before you vote on any employment contracts, the board needs to verbally hear the terms of the contract.
Okay, and, and this person has been a counselor for a long time and is moving up to be dean. And I've heard very good things about him. I don't really know him that well, but I've heard very good things about him. Okay, so, so we're moving forward. So that's it, right? Um, do we have a motion and second please for this?
So moved.
So trustee Jay makes the motion and.
I second.
Trustee Rydell seconded it. Are there, I don't think there's any question or comments. I don't have anything to say. We're doing a lot of hiring, but that's exciting. I guess, madam secretary, can you call them, call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Okay, and then classified personnel items. Vice chancellor Biscachill, are there any changes on this?
There are no changes. Thank you.
No changes. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, that's trustee Jay make the motion and trustee Rydell seconded it. Okay. And madam secretary, can you call the roll please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Okay, it passes and now the non-bargaining unit actions. Are there any changes, vice chancellor Biscachill?
No changes. Thank you.
No changes. Is there a motion and a second? Trustee Jay, did you make the motion?
I so moved.
Is there a second? Oh, trustee, trustee Wright seconded it. Okay. Um, so madam secretary, can you read the role please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is 11.4, the bonded sabbatical recommendations for this year and next year. And there's 20 sabbatical projects. That sounds so fascinating. Is there a motion and a second on this?
So moved.
Trustee Prendergast made the motion there a second. Trustee Inman a second. There, is there any comment? I still like, if, if some of the people could come and talk to us about what they learned on their sabbatical replacement and their sabbatical. But anyway, we'll talk about that next year. So are there any questions about this? There are really some exciting proposals. So, no, okay. So madam secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Okay, and then the next one, which is, is the adjustment to the salary schedule for the district management team 2021, 2024 is, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay, motion trustee Prendergast seconded it. Um, are there any questions? It's just a clerical thing. That's all this is. So then madam secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item is the speakers, but I don't think we have to approve that, right? That's just informational, right? Okay. Nine speakers for Laura Hoffman's emeritus class and a Black History Month speaker at Irvine Valley College. Then the next items, we might get out of here on time, are, are informational items. The higher education emergency fund relief funding, HERF funding, the COVID-19 response block camp funding. Uh, the, the monthly financial status report. Um, I think I'm doing it out of order. That, this is the HERF monthly summary. The COVID-19 response block camp grant monthly summary, the retiree OPEB trust fund, the basic aid report, the facilities plan status report. Um, and these are all informational items that are in the agenda, which are interesting to read. And then there are three written oral reports by, from chancellor Kathleen Burke and Irvine Irvine Valley College president, John Hernandez and Saddleback College president Stern. Chancellor Burke, do you have anything you'd like to say or is it all in your written report?
It's all in my written report.
Good. It was interesting. Irvine Valley College, do you have anything more to say in your report?
I, I just would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and recognize the incredible and tireless effort that both colleges and our district colleagues in particular have been engaged in to implement our student vaccination requirement. In particular, the vice presidents of both colleges, our IT colleagues at the district and our college health center specifically making sure that the vaccination verification system is up and running, reviewing the medical and religious exemption requests and then ensuring that the weekly testing student appointments are being implemented correctly. And so as we all know, the start of any semester requires a great deal of detailed energy and follow-through. And this spring has been particularly even more important to have had all of those elements. And I'm just very grateful to all involved and to the faculty, staff and administrators for helping us get the spring semester operating in the safest, most effective ways for our students. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. That it's been a monumental task to get all of our students' records. And they talked about it in the geek report, how IT has really stepped up to the plate too, making sure that everything gets recorded and everything gets done. And so everybody, everybody's been working together and we really thank everybody for all that work. It's been incredible. Okay, thank you so much. And next, Saddleback College president Elliot Stern, do you have anything to add behind, besides your written report?
I, I don't. Now that my, my sibling president has said everything that I was going to say. So thank you, John, for saying that so eloquently. I think people have no idea what's happening behind the scenes to implement everything that has been decided at higher levels. And we are really grateful to those people. And thank you, John, for expressing that and flushing it out for everybody.
Yes, a monumental amount of work. Okay, thank you so much. And vice chancellor of business services. Vice chancellor Anne Marie Gabel, do you have, my watch is just talking, sorry. Vice chancellor Anne Marie Gabel, do you have any reporters? You, you, you did the written report about the governor's budget. That was so fascinating. It was really good.
Correct. And I just wanted to thank trustee Jay for giving my report for me. So as she said, more to come on the budget. We're now awaiting the may revise, but this is the start of our budget season. So if you have any questions after you read my report, just let me know.
I know you put, you put your email in the report. I thought that was so nice of you. But it looks, it looks so far, so good. Looks, you know, it looks okay. It looks good. See, thank you.
Very promising budget. Yes.
Promising. So thank you so much for all you're doing. I appreciate it. And then vice chancellor of human resources, Cindy Biscachill, do you have any report or?
A brief shout out to the sabbatical committee. I co-chair that committee this year with Steve Tay, tenured faculty member at Saddleback College. They do a ton of work in a short time at the end of the semester when they're very busy. They do it extremely well. They're very discerning. They do not approve everything that comes before them. They send a lot of things back for revision. And that very large committee mostly made up of faculty does outstanding work. And I thank the board for approving those items tonight. And I want to commend the committee for their work. Thank you.
And thank you. I just wanted to hear about every single one of those sabbaticals. They sound so fascinating. Sounds like they'll bring a lot of really good work back for our students too. So thank you so much. And now I think, is there anything else? I think the meeting is adjourned.